We're in place. Board of Commissioners meeting now, order. We ask that all the standard to please lead some prayer.
Let's pray. I'll follow with y'all in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Here is this day our daily bread. And give us our trust to see and we can hear the truth first cast against us. It is not in the temptation when you live for more than evil. For thou is the kingdom, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen. This time we thank for the prayers. I plead with vengeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. You notice in your agenda, we have one very important announcement. Begin tomorrow, the Department of Social Services will begin accepting applications here at the town hall for funds donated by First Step Gospel Group. And they will go for the water and sewer bills of our senior citizens who are seventy years old or older. The funds will be distributed from nine to eight AM until the funds are exhausted on a first come, first served basis. The individual must be at least seventy years old. They must be a Princeville resident. They must have a photo ID. They must have a current or past new water bill. They must have a written signed statement from resident or the owner if your name is not on the bill. If not, to exceed one hundred dollars per household. If the bill is less than a hundred dollars, the payment will be sent to the county as a credit. Application will be taken on a first come, first served basis, beginning tomorrow at nine AM until five or until the funds are exhausted. And again, we'd like to thank First Step for their contribution.
Do you have application copies?
We can make some. This time we move to public comments. Mayor Perkins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Delia Perkins, one twenty-three level street, Russell Rocker down. And again, this month, I'm here about police department. I think that the town can afford a police department. I think last month I gave you some figures, which I'm hoping that the town manager looked at them and sort of put it together for you. I talked with former police chief from here. And he was disturbed when he came back in Princeville and found out we don't have a police department. And I told him I am too. So I hope as you go into your budget process, that you will put a lot of items back in for police department for the town of Princeville. The other item I'd like to discuss is the weather's beginning to warm up. And the snakes are gonna be tied in the hot water and then gonna start to come out. I also think that the town of Princeville should have enough money since it doesn't have any debt to spend at least a thousand dollars. I think it's about five or six ditches would then consider limits that need to be cleaned out. And I think that the town of Princeville should bid out those ditches and have them cleaned out before the warm weather comes, before the snakes decide to come out. And also, there's one ditch right around the corner from me. If the water gets in higher, the later on the left and the later on the right, the trailer might just fall in the ditch because it's eroding the ground. I hope that you all are listening to us as taxpaying citizens. And the only reason I'm here, I'm not trying to take about a job, to leave about a job, or work about a job, but I'm a taxpaying citizen. And I think that these are things, since you don't have any debt, you paying the county ten thousand dollars for the upkeep of the water system, take that same ten thousand dollars, clean out the ditches. The budget for the police department before was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Take that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and bring the police department back here. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bridges.
Good evening, everybody. I guess when I get up here, while all is a repetition, they know what I wanna talk about. When I get up here, last year in October, the bad board passed to amend the budget to public safety department and to install a police department and business system concerning that. And I'm back again saying, there's nothing been done about. All right, here comes Sharon Lethy, January, first stated that if the town wanted a police department, it must increase the bad home tax to forty-four cents. She know that, and she think y'all dumb. The money is all, you don't have to beg in the money. The money is already in the budget. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is in the budget. And it's been approved to amend the budget to take half of that, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, to establish a police department. And I know you, some of you do, and you've been being pressured by administration up here about things. You're not dumb. You, don't let them pressure you to not do anything. You tell the manager what to do, and if he does, you know what to do about that. She also says she was gonna check the water rate. When the engineers install the water and sewer here in Princeville, they say a family of two to four water bills should be no more than thirty to forty dollars a month. Now they overheard my thought. The manager won't even go up there and talk with the county. The county about the water rates, maybe he can be some help to you all to do that. Mister Mayor, you said you want to make the town great again. You're a good man. I want to help. I won't come up here and try to tell you how to run the town, but I have a lot of spirit and things that I can do to help you. The county, the contract, the police department, the contract, the county doing it, not the sheriff's department, the police department, all right? They got the water, the sewer system, collecting the proper tax. They cut the whole town in their hand. So if you want to make, I'm saying this to you, Mister Mayor, and the Board of Commissioners, you need to take the town back. Take the town back. I don't mean to take everything or destroy, try to destroy the sheriff's department or get another department there. But the money is there. Use it. Use it, put yourself some foot. That's why I just sent you there, all right? For our town, and you can't do that, all right? And also, it's about time to make up the budget again. You be having, the budget's got to be presented to the town board by July, and you be working on it in May, April, in May and June, get your budget together. Is that right, Mister Mayor? Okay. In doing so, also, there's some things about that need to go in the budget. Put Westley Lane, Fourth Street, and Drain in the application for the power bill this time. Keep, take that under consideration. I'll repeat, put Westley Lane, Fourth Street, and Drain application in the power bill and budget this time. Okay, all right? Now, in doing that, the town citizens will certainly be appreciated and they'll love you. And now, since you'll be there filing an application for a new town manager, when he gonna leave the town, if he resigns, that time for him to move on, not stand in the way of what you all want to do. And if it happened to these, I ain't seen nothing that's happening to me. Mayor, one other thing I want to show you, and help us make the town greater, so you can have that. During the flood of nineteen ninety-nine, President Clinton came here, shook his hand, chat with him, but didn't go into a meeting with him, all right? He said, "You sit up here with FEMA." You know what FEMA are? You know, federal emergency management, that's what FEMA stands for. And they were helping to recover, all right? I was put, look, it looked like a Bible, so fit. I was put on recovery team. Two lawyers, two people from FEMA, and other local citizens here, they kept in there, and I got the danger signal and re-received a copper. We worked up everything, we sent here with maps, different map suggestions, all over the town. You want to take the copper, sure, and take it, pass it down, so they can see this, I haven't ever seen. And we had the thirty-four million, you know how much money? When we sent that report back then to President Clinton, thirteen million dollars came to President. Thirteen million was spent. And a team of lawyers was set up there, and the museum also. I can tell you where you could find grant to help the museum. Get what they want to watch the museum, use it for reunion, you know, picnic, and artifacts they set, and use for town meeting. And I got the list of all of it. And I just wanted here, I just wanted here, and that's all. I argued there, not the manager, but the citizens here, and the town manager ain't doing nothing. They go away, can't get out of the way. So as soon as you all can move along with what you got before the budget go. Advocations out, is that right, Mayor? Advocations out, Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Then probably move in second, that we approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions? All in favor, use vote beside "aye." Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? Then probably move in second, that we open the public hearing. And this is about the proposed updated zoning map, which is located right here. If the public has any comments, questions, or concerns, this is the time.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
What zoning is that? Could you explain what you mean zoning?
Okay, nothing's been rezoned. This is Edson County mapping that has been updated, Princeville zoning map, to reflect the zoning changes through March of twenty-first, twenty sixteen.
Can you explain something about?
All the changes that we made since I've been on the board, Edson County put it in this map to be reflected. I know we changed over here to commercial and down on for the usual in front of the museum, that's changed to commercial. Remember, we changed the place out on Shallow Farm Road for the, over building months, we changed that to commercial, so all that's been reflected now on this.
Both sides of Main Street is commercial?
Just on this side where Mister Bennett's auto facility is.
And then the area from the light, how far down is that commercial?
How far down is it?
From the plant station, I think.
The last block, it doesn't have a house on it.
The last one?
The last block that doesn't have a house.
The last block, so that's not a house on that property. Okay, so when you all rezoned that commercial, because as I remember, you know, houses can go on that side, but a business can go on that side, but it had to be, it needed to be elevated, so is that included in this new zone?
The only thing that was changed was the residential to commercial.
Commercial, so you can build a store there?
Yeah.
Does town have anything, say, if someone wanted to put a business over there, does the town have any additional regulations as to what kind of structure that you can put over there?
No.
You all realize that too, that's part of the flood zone?
Right.
Well, this is one of the things that I didn't work on, that I did work on, and I'll be happy to explain it. About a year ago, the town adopted Edson County's flood management prevention ordinance. And that stipulates, depending on what the expected water level's gonna be, how far I'll get down the houses or the structure will have to be. So that's taken into account, and that's a part of the Edson County zoning.
Does Princeville have this in writing for Princeville?
Yes.
Does it, in your zoning ordinance, is in writing as far as the structures? Because some people have asked, what can you put over on that side? Because is the math some problem? Some people have asked a question. And as I was done, I knew that it was in a flood zone. So that's why I was asking, does Princeville, even though you adopted what the county had, does Princeville city have some stipulation? Say, if somebody wanted to come in and put a store, does Princeville have any stipulation as to, does it have to be elevated two and a half feet, three feet?
It has to be elevated per the county's flood management ordinance.
Per the county?
Yes.
But does Princeville have that in there?
Princeville adopted the county's.
I know that, but is there anything in Princeville? See, what, I understand what the county had and what I'm trying to say. If someone walked through that door and they said, "I wanna see what Princeville has in the writing," does Princeville have anything in writing as, or do you have the same thing in writing in your town hall that someone can walk in and look?
Well, this is the exact same thing as any kind of building regulation or building. If somebody walked in and wanted to build a, put a dollar general on that side of the, on that side of the street, we would look at the zoning and see that it's allowed in there. And we would simply present them with a zoning compliance permit. They would go to the county, and then the county would start the regulation process. Is this building gonna meet state regulations? Is the height gonna be the same? All those kind of building regulations, all those kind of detail are administered by the county. The town wouldn't have anything to do, we wouldn't have anything to do with that anymore than we would inspecting a heating and air conditioning system or something like that.
Maybe not, but it's all, we really have the old stuff.
But what I'm saying is Princeville did adopt that, and it is a document here at the town hall.
So there's that, if I want to know.
Yes. I can email that document to you.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did the planning board have any input in the change? There was a recommendation to the board?
Yes, sir.
When did the planning board do that?
We did most of this last year, if not before.
I'm saying the planning board, now I'm talking about the business, the board, the planning board said that, they didn't have such a many going change, and then they recommended to you all, you have fourth right to act on it, or change, or make amendment, and so forth, like that. And on the right side, used to be a church in front of the fire station. That's where a Mount, a sacred church, like that, right there. We're moving on down there. And it's commercial all the way down to where not Beaman Live, the Chinese, go we own the truck stop out here, all this, all this, C points, commercial.
All this commercial. Any other questions?
Any small map like that you got, the system advocates, they look at that before the public hearing was set, you're supposed to have a copper to the public before, had it been public hearing, so maybe there more people get out. I don't have no objection to it, but that's what I'm saying. Through the proper procedure, you know, in doing things, and somebody come in and want to sue you because you didn't do this or do that, then you don't run into that.
If I'm not mistaken, each time we made an adjustment, we did that, we have the comments session. Other questions? Any motion to close the public hearing? Then probably move in second, that we close the public hearing. Other questions? All in favor, use vote beside "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt the zoning map? Then probably move in second, that we adopt the zoning map. Are there any questions? All in favor, use vote beside "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. And that was item E, and we've already taken care of that. That was E, that's zoning map. And now we'll move to attachment C. Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for the updated town code ordinance for our next meeting? Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for the updated town code ordinance for our next meeting? Then probably move in second, that we schedule a public hearing for our updated town code ordinance at our next monthly meeting. Other questions? All in favor, use vote beside "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. And then we'll move to attachment D. And this amendment is the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents authorized the payoff of the remaining mortgage of a senior citizen building. Is there a motion to approve adjustment to the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget as presented? Then probably move in second, that we approve the amendment to number eleven, to the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen fiscal year budget as presented. Other questions? All in favor, use vote beside "aye." Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll move to attachment E. And this is surplus property resolution. And it reads as follows. Resolution authorizing the sale of certain portion of property where is the town of Princeville owns certain items or portion of property that have become surplus for its current needs. And where is North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash two sixty-six permits the town to sell such property via public sale upon authorization by the town's board of commissioners at a regular meeting. And where is the board of commissioners of the town desires to dispose of certain surplus property of the town. And where is the board of commissioners of the town that convenes in a regular meeting, now therefore being resolved by the board of commissioners of the town, that one, the board of commissioners authorize the town manager to sell the following item of surplus personal property. One canine unit doll. Number two, the board of commissioners authorize the town manager to sell this target to former Princeville Police Officer William Barnes for the sum of one dollar.
Mister Mayor? I would recommend in the second paragraph of that resolution, second sentence, or second line, this is public sale. That particular statute allows for sales by different ways, and this is not really a public sale. I recommend striking that word and changing it to the words, private negotiation and sale.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, so we're gonna change public to private?
Strike public and sale.
Public and sale.
The sentence should read, whereas North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash two sixty-six permits the town to sell such property via private negotiation and sale upon authorization by the town board of commissioners.
Okay, private negotiation.
Private negotiation.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion to adopt the resolution that authorize the manager to sell the doll to Mister Barnes for one dollar. Then probably move in second, that we adopt the resolution to authorize the manager to sell the doll to Mister Barnes for one dollar. Other questions? All in favor, use vote beside "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to attachment F. The town is in the process of applying for a part of the grant to renovate Heritage Park. The grant requires a dollar for dollar match from the town, and the project must be completed within three years following the award. The initial estimate for renovation was two hundred thousand dollars, but following a need assessment by the park and recreation committee, it appears that three hundred thousand will be needed, a hundred and fifty from the town. If the project is completed over the three-year period, the town will need to budget fifty thousand dollars per year over the next three years to fund the town's match. The following amenities are planned at Heritage Park. Ready the renovated baseball field, new recreation center, new recreational facilities, and amphitheater, a walking trail, outdoor exercise equipment, improved picnic facilities, landscaping, and access. The town of Princeville Capital Project Ordinance, Princeville Heritage Park, being ordained by the governing board of the town of Princeville, North Carolina, that pursuant to General Statute section thirteen point two of chapter one fifty-nine dash thirteen point two of the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Act, the following capital project ordinance is hereby adopted. Section one, the project authorized is the redevelopment of the Princeville Heritage Park, consisting of park and recreation equipment for ages two through five, thirteen through nineteen, twenty through forty-nine, and fifty plus. Ball field renovation, utilities, site preparation, building renovation, associated and related complex amenities, including but not limited to bleachers, benches, and incidental costs. Section two, the officers of this unit are hereby directed to proceed with the capital project within the terms of this ordinance, project contract, documents, and the budget contained herein. Section three, the following revenues are anticipated to be available to complete this project. Part of grant proceeds, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, municipal funds, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for total of three hundred thousand dollars. Section four, the following amounts are appropriated for the project. Construction, two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred dollars. Containment city, fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Technical services and fees, forty-five thousand dollars, for total of three hundred thousand dollars. Section five, the finance officer is hereby directed to maintain within the capital project fund sufficient specific detailed accounting records to satisfy the requirement of the local government commission. Section six, the finance officer is directed to report on a monthly basis on the financial status of each project, element in such a grade, and on the total revenue received. Section seven, copies of this capital project ordinance shall be furnished to the finance officer for direction in carrying out this project. Section eight, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage until the project is completed and closed. Section nine, this ordinance may be amended in any manner so long it continues to fulfill the requirements of General Statute one fifty-nine dash thirteen point two and other applicable laws. Adopted this twenty-first day of March, twenty sixteen. Is there a motion to adopt the Heritage Park capital ordinance as presented? Then probably move in second, that we adopt the Heritage Park capital project ordinance as presented. Other questions? All in favor, use vote beside "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Attachment G. We give it all, that's right. Thank you very much. And now we'll move to the town manager's report. I would like to address one concern of the Mayor Perkins about the drain cleaning. The town has already started this process. They contract with the county to clean and vacuum several drainage pipe areas in Church Street and Mullins, Beasley and South Main, Walter Street at Glane Bridge Apartments, Snowdon Street near Williams, Oda Street at Second Street. As previously discussed, the town plans to rent and vacuum and drain some of these areas, clean other ditches, and clean debris from several roadways throughout the town. So we're in the process of cleaning right now.
Can I ask something? Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from you? Any comments, questions?
So we, we still in, gonna be in the process of bringing the backhoe, the stairs? So, yes, guess you will be ten to.
Um, the stairs.
Yes, ma'am.
Will they backhoe, rent, will we be able to go out and do public hearing at all? Try to see what we, we done after?
Well, the, the first, the first one wasn't live for an entire week, so we're, we're gonna try to schedule to get as many places as we can.
What time are you, uh, we looking at this may, next month or this month?
I'm hoping within the next two or three weeks.
Next two, three weeks.
Anything else from the town manager? Okay, we'll move to the town attorney's report, anything?
None to report.
Okay. Senior citizens report? Director?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, I'd just like to report that the Princeville senior citizens are having a ball over there, we're doing what we need to do. Um, we attended the gradual library last Wednesday, last Thursday, the Department of Social Services actually gave us a U. S. A. grant up in Ola Heights on Thursday, which is also my birthday. And, um, Friday we waited to get back to the center, and we celebrated my birthday again with ice cream. So we, we're having a good time over there, and, um, I'd like to thank the manager for sending people over there, kind of something right now, because, you know, um, this building and that building over there were built primarily around about the same time, and things are kind of settled now, so things are kind of falling apart. And, um, we, we had some problems, but they're being taken care of gradually as, as, as needed. Um, we do have, we still have a lot of posters and things over there that we would like to sell, um, you all saw some of the work that we've done last year when we celebrate the, the town's birthday. We do have a lot of posters over there still, and we'd like to get rid of it so we can save money, so we can do different things with the seniors. Also, we, um, we raised money last year for the United Way campaign, and the Princeville senior citizens center received a diamond award, and so we like to thank the company that supported us on that. And I do have a picture of us receiving it, and if you will pass it around, but Mr. Mayor, this actually goes to you. And, um, if you all will pass it around, and we'd like to say we do appreciate that. And, um, I, I, I'd like to also say, as a, as a former commissioner who loves this town, and believe it or not, I, I feel like I'm entitled to tell you all this. I love Princeville with all my heart. I have, uh, lived here all my life, Water Ray is two blocks down. And, um, if I tell you all something or ask you all something in reference to what's going on in town as far as artisans, artisans or anything like that, you will be able to look back in the book and find it. I'm not gonna lead you wrong because I love this town, and it's my home, and I like to be there, and I want to see you all succeed in what you all are trying to do. And anytime you all meet, I, believe it or not, you learn from experience. And, uh, you all do have a lot of people here that were successful in what they were trying to do. I feel like when I was in office, I was successful at what I tried to do. I was there for fifteen years, also represented the town of Princeville, the Upper Coast of Miami for fifteen years. But I was the vice chair one year and the secretary for three years. So I feel like I do have some knowledge as to how a town should be run, and I can assure you all that what we need right now is a good town manager that's already experienced to come in here and take charge, get this park going, and anything else that we can help get done, we'll be glad to do it as citizens. And, uh, I don't know about this person or this egg, but I definitely don't want your dog on the boat. I've had my field fifteen years, it's a long time, and, uh, I lost a lot with trying to raise my children because I was out here trying to help everybody else. But I can say when I first came on board, there were twelve commissioners on board. By the, after the fifth year when I was, well, actually the third year, after I got involved in, I said, this stuff make any sense. So we made arrangements to bring it down to buy, and I was proud of that because we were like a joke. When I went to the legal municipalities and places, Princeville was a joke at that time, but I don't want it to be a joke anymore. So I want you all to get together, work with each other. Everybody's not gonna have that way, not anything, it doesn't work that way, but you work for the benefit of the town. And if you do that, you'll be back in here another year, another four more years when the election time come. But just consider the citizens and what they want sometime too, okay? And on that note, I'm sitting down here.
Gentlemen, sorry, to the board.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, thank you for the comments, and we are listening. We may not be able to just do what everybody wants at this time, but we're listening, and we're working on it.
And again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and I did talk about, um, Commissioner Rankin said, we are listening, uh, we are working on things. We do appreciate your input, we really do, and we will follow you. Like you said, we, we reach out to you, thank you so much.
Once again, thank everyone for coming. I said, once again, thank everyone, I mean, uh. Let me just recognize the absence of, uh, Commissioner Bullock, he had a procedure today, but that's why he's not here. Uh, also, we received a thank you card from Commissioner Howell, after we sent a gift, a little pass that her brother, so let's continue to keep her in prayer. When LGC had the books, um, they came up with a budget that recommended us to cut the police department. And at that time, nobody complained.
Excuse me?
Nobody that I would call complained.
I talked to them directly and told them it was a shame.
Okay.
I did, I told them that wasn't, wasn't right, talked to Sharon and Vayner Hardman.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm referring to in the budget hearing where the citizens were invited to come.
When was the budget hearing?
It was at the school.
Oh, over there.
Uh-huh.
I was on time.
Okay. And that's when we should have complained. At the beginning, I did not see the need to give it to the police department. I want the police department because I think we should have everything that any of the town have. But we have to look at the dollars and what we wanna do for the town of Princeville. At this point, at this point, I don't see where we can find the money to do the police department, this is just a personal opinion. Hopefully, when we start doing the things that we have in, in, in our plans, we can bring that police department back. But we don't just wanna bring a police department back that can't sustain itself. When we came in, we had two police on the force. But that was not a good police force, and the reason I'm saying that is because if they were good enough, when they cut the police department here, the sheriff department had eight openings. They would not offer a job at the sheriff department, but even though they were behind. And I'm not trying to downgrade anybody, what, what I'm saying is we want the best for the town of Princeville. We wanna be able to pay people when they come here and not wanna leave because they get a higher paying job someplace else. Um, that's what we dealing with in education now, when teachers come in, they come in at Edson County, looking for the first thing is paying a little bit more, few more dollars, and they'll go running. So what do we need to do as a town to make sure that we provide our police department what they need to get the job done without having to need somebody else to come in and support us? We wanna make sure that our citizens are safe. First and foremost, our citizens have to be safe. Right now, in my opinion,
You're not safe.
We're safer than they've been, when I can't along with the two police that we have, and they're leaving at eleven o'clock at night. Okay? I'll leave it there, okay, I see, I, I, y'all disagree, so we'll just leave it right there.
May I ask you one question?
Let's, let me close the meeting, then we, we can talk.
Can I ask you one question?
Let me close the.
Everybody here this.
Okay.
Why isn't that Princeville is paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the county, and nobody else that they serve is paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, tell me that.
Okay, I tell you that because, again, we did not negotiate the contract. LGC negotiated, so we negotiated the contract, that's first, and then after we got there and we did some research, and we presented another proposal, couldn't let it have the hundred fifty? Hundred twenty-five. Okay, yes, sir, and we will close out.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You say you don't have the money, you do, if we put in the budget to begin it, two a quarter million dollars. And I'm not asking to cut the sheriff department out, I'm just saying, share it, take half of that million dollars. A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, you can hire two police, get two new cars, have two policemen, and you don't have to have the money I keep in hand, you don't have the money, you do have the money.
Well, let me, let me rephrase it. We don't have enough money to do what we need to do to, to be safe in the town of Princeville, if two police officers wanna do it, let's break.
There, yeah, there'd be some here.
It'll help, it'll make us safe.
And the citizens are talking about it too, I'm, about five hundred people calling me something in my house. And I'm telling them, no, I, I don't, I'm not convinced, I have no thought, I can only go down in there. And, hey, tell you what, next year, you better wake up, you better get, you better get some police with you, brother.
Let's close out, and we will talk some more.
Yes, sir, yeah, you're talk, I'm coming, talk with you.
All right.
I'm coming, tell you how, talk with you.
Very good.
Yeah, sure.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Then probably move in second that we adjourn, are there questions? All in favor, you can vote and sign aye. Oppose nay. Ayes have it, thank you very much.